Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Regular Board Meeting. Today is Monday, October 17th, 2020. I call tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Saluka, can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Daniels?
Here. At this time, can I have an approval of the Resolution Number 2022-2021, filling the board vacancy?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, the Board of Education would like to call Mr. Anthony Isom up. The Board has, first, we would like to offer our condolences to the Jubey family. Unfortunately, we're having to fill this vacancy this evening due to the loss of a board member that served the district and the community for a significant amount of years. We would like to thank the members of the community for assisting us by those who showed an interest in serving alongside of us in order to ensure that we provide a quality education for all children in the Garfield Heights community. So I would like to thank all the members of our community that took a stand and came out on such a short notice to interview for the vacancy. It is our honor this evening as the Board of Education to offer this opportunity and this vacancy to Mr. Anthony Isom, a member of our community. This evening, we will be swearing in Mr. Isom for the appointment as a board member for the Garfield Heights City School District. So if Mr. Isom would like to come up, as Mr. Saluka, give him his oath of office. Again, on behalf of the Garfield Heights City School District, we are honored to have you to sit alongside us and serve the students and the community of the Garfield Heights City School District. Do any of my board members would like to make comment relative to Mr. Isom's appointment today? Ms. Thomas? Ms. Morrison?
Just to say congratulations and look forward to working with you.
Ms. King?
Congratulations. I look forward to working with you. Anything that you need, reach out. We're here to support you.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate the opportunity. Just wanted to address everybody here. My name is Anthony Isom, and it's a blessing to be here. And I can't wait to get to work and, you know, do what's needed to serve the community and the students of Garfield. Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is an adopt, can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we will have a moment of silence and reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. This night, tonight, I would like to dedicate the moment of silence to Mr. Joe Jubey. As a board, it's challenging to move forward with business as usual after losing a colleague less than three weeks ago. Joe served alongside of us and me serving as president, he mentored me and answered a lot of questions and supported us in filling in a lot of the historical gaps as we were moving the district forward. This evening, I want to utilize this time and moment of silence to just reflect on Mr. Jubey's service to the Garfield Heights City School District and also use this moment of silence just to reflect and provide comfort and support to the Jubey family as they move through this time of sorrow of losing their beloved. So at this time, we'll have our moment of silence. And after our moment of silence, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Morrison. Ms. Morrison?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the September 12th, 2020 Special Board Meeting, the September 19th, 2020 Regular Board Meeting, and the September 24th Special Board Meeting as presented?
So moved. Second.
The second was, Ms. King, Ms. Thomas? Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we will have our committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
Madam President, I have a report.
Ms. Thomas?
I have a CBCC report. We met on September 29th. We got an enrollment update. Garfield Heights remains having some of the highest enrollment numbers at CBCC in the past 10 years. We also received a facilities presentation by our business manager, Mike Day. We have four interior projects that have been completed, one of them including the administration entrance. We also got a five-year forecast of our upgrades facility-wide. October 6th was College Night at CBCC, and November 12th is our annual holiday craft show. We also honor Garfield Heights District student Sidney McLeoy. She's a senior here at Garfield, and she is in our Health Careers Program. She enjoys learning about the nursing field after going to work with her grandmother. She also is very involved here at the high school. She runs track, and she is also a cheerleader. In her free time, she enjoys being with her friends and family. After she graduates, she plans on working as well as going to college at the University of Cincinnati and becoming a neonatal intensive care nurse. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Is there any questions or discussions relative to Ms. Thomas's report regarding Cuyahoga Valley Career Center this evening? If there's no other, no questions regarding Ms. Thomas's report, are there any other committee reports this evening?
Madam President?
Ms. King?
I have a Community and Family Engagement Liaison Report.
Ms. King?
First off, I want to report over the last month, I had the opportunity to attend the community meeting at Boys Hope, Girls Hope last Monday. There were representatives from our city leadership, Pastor Dave from the Rock Church, a few community members, myself and Representative Shaila L. Davis. We had a great opportunity to learn about some of the activities that are happening in our, our city and talked about how we can work more collaboratively to provide a community feel and additional activities for our families and our, our scholars in the district. I also attended the MYCOM Steering Committee meeting, and we're continually working on our plan for our Garfield youth, looking to begin to set up our Student Leadership Group and continuing our work plan so that we can work towards the three goals that we have set for MYCOM. Also, in my role as community liaison, I give regular updates on significant issues impacting the district and the community. Today, I would like to update you on the status of negotiations with our teachers represented by GHTA. As many of you know, we are, we are also trying to reach a new collective bargaining agreement with our teaching staff, which is represented by GHTA. I am a member of the force negotiating team and have been present at each meeting with the GHTA negotiating team. At our last meeting, I provided an update of the progress made prior to entering mediation with the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service. We have now met with the Federal Mediator on two separate occasions, October 11th and today, October 17th. On October 11th, we met for over six hours with the GHTA team to make progress on reaching a new contract. At the end of the day, we reached a tentative agreement on two issues, teacher workday and granny teachers' time during a professional development day to assist them with the writing of student reading improvement plans. We then spent this, spent a significant amount of time discussing how to address the shared interest of ensuring proper substitute coverage exists for our elementary students. At the end of the day, at the end of that date, based on the progress the team made, we agreed to meet on October 17th, 2022. Today, the board, the board team was optimistic and committed to doing everything we could to try to reach a deal with the GHTA leadership. We started with the GHTA team at 8:00 a.m. and picked up where we left off on addressing the substitute coverage issues. Each party exchanged their written thoughts on how the, how to address the issue. After a thorough discussion on that issue, the parties then turned to addressing the critical issues that remain. In the early afternoon today, in order to try to resolve the contract, the board team provided the union with an outline as to its proposed package deal. While I cannot share certain specifics of that proposed deal, the highlights of the package are as follows. We increased the base increase percentage. We accepted the union's proposal related to increased severance pay. We agreed to increase the classroom subrates and classroom split rates. We agreed to increase the rate for professional development outside the workday. We agreed to increase the rate for tutoring on plan time. We agreed to increase the rate for tutoring or home instruction. We agreed to the union's proposal to establish a supplemental committee to review the current supplemental salary schedule. We withdrew our proposal related to converting a half-day of teacher grading into a PD day. We withdrew our prior, prior proposal on mandatory, mandatory professional development outside of the workday and offered an alternative proposal designed to address the union's concerns. Unfortunately, despite the board teams offering a compromise position on almost all of the union's critical issues, the union team rejected the parameters of our proposed deal. However, the board team remains committed to continuing to work collaboratively with the union team to reach a fair contract. But it will take compromise from both sides to get the deal done. The board cannot do it alone and does not want to do it alone. We are hopeful that the union team recognizes the significant movements the board made across the remaining issues today, and we look forward to meeting with the union team soon to try to resolve the last remaining issues cooperatively. With that, that's the end of my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. King. Are there any questions relative to Ms. King's Community and Family Engagement Liaison Report? If there's no questions, are there any other reports this evening? If there's no other reports, the next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. I began my report with an update relative to the ongoing investigation into a threat that was posted on social media over the weekend. The Garfield Heights City Schools continues to work intensively with the Garfield Heights Police Department to further an investigation into the threat that was posted on the social media this weekend. It's currently following the protocols outlined by the emergency plan. With the help of our partners in the police department, we will continue to thoroughly review the matter with the appropriate sensitivity. As an added precaution, the Garfield Heights City Schools will be enhancing its, excuse me, its safety and security presence throughout the day on Tuesday, October 18th throughout our campuses and during the entire week. The district treats every, every threat to the utmost seriousness, and will continue to work closely with the Public Safety and Security Team to thoroughly investigate the matter in order to provide and ensure a secure environment. I'd like to also thank Ms. Hager and any individuals involved in hosting our Board of Education meeting tonight. Throughout our meeting schedule this year, we'll rotate the meetings as a method by which schools can showcase their ongoing efforts in their buildings and as a method that we can remain accessible and transparent with the community. So thank you for hosting this meeting, and I'd like to give a shout out to Ms. Joanie Wunderstark for her support and the work that she did with taking a group of students to the Mental Health Summit on Monday, October 10th, the Day of Mental Health Awareness and Instruction, was capped off with the surprise visit from Cleveland Cavalier Kevin Love. So thanks for making that a great opportunity for our students. On a sad and serious note, yeah. On a sad and serious note, I want to acknowledge and express the district's condolences to a board, to the board member of Joe Jubey's family. Though I only knew him for a short period of time, it became very apparent and quite evident that it's a force of love for the district and the passion for our students and for this community. We continue to honor the service of, of this untimely passing of Mr. Jubey by continuing to show the love and passion for the Garfield Heights City Schools as he did. My respectful sympathy goes out to his wife, Ms. Anita, and his family. A few events and initiatives for the community information should hopefully provide parents with some, some excitement. First, this Thursday, October 20th, the Community and Family Engagement Team is hosting a fall festival and trunk or treat from 4:30 to 6:30 at the middle school. This free event is open to families in the district, and we encourage you to, to come and participate in contests, grab some seasonal treats, and have some fun. More information is available on the website. Secondly, the Garfield Heights City Schools has continued to partner with the Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Ohio by offering a free-of-charge after-school program beginning November 1st and running through the end of the school year for third through fifth graders. The times will be 3 o'clock PM until 6:30 PM, Monday through Friday. This amazing opportunity is certain to help students with a safe place and an educational environment. The after-school program will be hosted by both Elmwood and Maple Heights, I'm sorry, Maple Leaf Elementary School. Those interested in participating must register. However, you can do so by going on our website. Please take advantage of this opportunity for after-school enrichment, which will include math and literacy, sports and recreation opportunities, STEM and robotics engagements, and more. Thank you all for attending this meeting, and we will continue to work hard each and every day to ensure that every child, every day, is nurtured, mentored, and grown. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Do you have any, anyone have any questions relative to Dr. Reynolds's report this evening? If there's no questions, we are going to go to remarks from the public regarding agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you. We don't have any reports. We, we don't have any comments from the public regarding agenda items this evening. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the Board Financial Report 7.1 as presented on the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Second.
And is there any discussion relative to this item? Or is there anything you would like to highlight, Mr. Saluka?
No, we're actually proceeding on course. We've just completed the first quarter, and we're right on target with our estimates. We're going to come out, actually, next month will be the, the first of the forecast. So that'll be an indication of where we stand moving forward here. So the first three months were uneventful and up to what we're estimating. So we're progressing along slowly but surely through the school year. So no surprises yet, and I'm not expecting any. Hopefully, knock on wood.
Thank you, Mr. Saluka. If there's, is there any other discussion relative to Board Financial Report, Item 7.1 on tonight's agenda? If there's not any discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas, and that was second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, can I have a motion to approve Personnel Agenda Items 9.1 through 14.1 as presented, actually, a motion to move and waive the reading of Personnel Agenda Items 9.1 through 14.1 as presented?
So moved. Second.
And is there any discussion on the items? If there's no discussion on the items 9.1 through 14.1 as presented, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King, and that was second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, can I have a motion to approve Contract Agenda Items 16.1 through 16.3 as presented?
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So are there no policy items?
There are no items on 15.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, can I have a motion to approve Contract Agenda Items 16.1 through 16.3 as presented on tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
And is there any discussion?
If I can make a quick comment on these items, these are contracts that are through the non-public schools, through our Title I grant funds. Most of our grant funds have a non-public component to them. We don't control what they spend the money on as long as it falls within the grant guidelines. We are only the fiscal agent. So these are contracts that the non-publics enter into using their Title I dollars. Also, there's Title II-A and Title VI-B that has a non-public component to it. So I think there was see some confusion even last May when we talked about some of the professional development that's part of the grant funds that the non-publics control. We, they are allowed to use their money as long as it's within the grant guidelines for whatever purpose they decide. We have to hold the contract because we're the fiscal agent and we administer the grant. That's why the board has to approve the contracts. But it's up to the non-publics to decide how and where they use their grant funding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Saluka. Is there any other questions regarding the items?
Just clarification, so when you refer to last May, are we referring to?
Big professional development expenditure that was made, right?
Speakers that they, they choose?
That was Trinity High School that chose to do a professional development series through that organization. And then it was throughout the school year, it was just one big payment at the end of the school year, once their contract was completed.
Thank you for the clarification.
If there's no other discussion on those items, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, can I have a motion to approve item, approve miscellaneous, miscellaneous agenda item 17.1 as presented?
So moved.
Second. And is there any discussion on these items? If there's no discussion, Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time on our agenda, we have remarks from the public regarding miscellaneous school items. And our policy reads as follows. All board meetings of the board and board-appointed committees are open to the public. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. Each person addressing the board should give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board to be placed on the regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Agendas are available to all those who attend board meetings. The section of the agenda for public participation shall be indicated. Noted at the bottom of each agenda shall be a short paragraph outlining the board's policy on public participation at the board meetings. This evening, we have Dawn Majors, who signed up to have public participation. Ms. Majors, if you can approach and just confirm your address, please.
Hello, I'm Dawn Majors. My address is 43 North Parkway, East Lake, Ohio.
Thank you.
This really works. I am here reading a letter for a former G- I am here reading a letter for a former GHTA member. Forty-six. It is a number divisible by many factors. This seems fitting, as it is also the number of teachers that have fled the Garfield Heights City School District in the last 12 months. This kind of teacher turnover is a leading cause in the fractured, divided, and disjointed environment in which your students are trying to learn every day. Cohesion and consistency are absolutely crucial. Failure to recognize anything less is a delusion. I taught for Garfield Heights City Schools from 2006 to 2020. I experienced firsthand the steady decline in teacher morale, and, not surprisingly, it directly corresponded to the steady decline in student performance and district scores. I know that I was an asset to your school district during my tenure there. This can be evidenced by my consistently accomplished ratings from multiple administrators as well as my status as a top-five finalist for the Outstanding Educator Award in 2012. Unfortunately for the students, the number of similar, similarly accomplished teachers that have also left is staggering. I stayed for 15 very difficult years. Let me be clear about one thing. I loved working with the underserved and primarily otherwise marginalized students and families in Garfield Heights. I stayed because I believed, and still do, that those students deserved good teachers, of which I assure you I was one. I stayed because I didn't want to be one more person that left those kids. I stayed until I just couldn't anymore. In the end, the demoralizing and degrading treatment from the then Board of Ed members, central office, and building administrators just became too much. Their disdain for teachers was palpable every day. I'm happy to report that I now work in a district that has a completely different relationship with its teachers. The building that I work in has a very similar population to that which I left behind in Garfield Heights. The climate and culture is completely different, however. I am a respected and valued member of a team. I want to come to work every day. Similar demographic plus positive working conditions equals student academic success. I implore you to finally do right by your teachers and give them a fair contract for once and for all. You cannot afford to continue to treat your teachers like they are disposable. Otherwise, your 46 is just going to grow every year in this open job market. You are hemorrhaging the very resource you depend upon the most. Of course, after 15 years, I still have friends in the district for whom I would like to see a fair contract. But when it comes down to it, I am sending this email on behalf of all of the students and families entrusted to you for their public education. The teachers' working conditions are the students' learning conditions. Trying to separate the two will only lead to further fracturing. In summary, another equation: Demoralized and unsupported teachers plus marginalized populations of students does not and will not ever equal student success. Most sincerely, Maria Colajay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on our agenda this evening is Therese Lappelli. If you could come up and... The next person on the agenda for public comment is Therese Lappelli. If you could come up and confirm your address. I don't have one here for you, so if you could just share that with me, it'd be appreciated.
20 Owen Brown Street, Hudson, Ohio.
Thank you.
Since 8 o'clock this morning, the GHTA team and the central office team have been bargaining. Later this afternoon, we appeared to be making progress. We were sharing documents in order to come to a resolution or a compromise because we had, as the GHTA team, been compromising all day. When we went to meet with the board team, the board team was gone. The board team didn't communicate with us that they were leaving, although we were in the next room as we'd been all day. The board team didn't communicate with us that they were leaving. We all had the same board meeting to be at tonight. We have teachers here tonight with boxes because this type of lack of communication affects all of us. The lack of respect leads to our lack of stability. I was prepared to come here and talk tonight about a very different message. I was prepared, the whole team was prepared to finish tonight because of the way we were all compromising and collaborating. Leaving us sitting there while you come here, I really don't have words to describe it, when you easily could have communicated so that we could all be here. Because these are all our teachers. These are all our teachers that we want the best for. These teachers deserve to come to work in a place that respects them, communicates with them, provides a stable life and living to them, because all of that leads to the success of our students. Our students deserve that stability and success as well. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other individuals on tonight's agenda for public comment. At this time, can I have a motion to enter into executive session at 6:41 PM for the purposes of discussing negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King, second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call on the motion to enter into executive session at 6:41 PM for the purposes of discussing negotiations? Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we will be entering into executive session as of 6:41 PM.